Have a second?
Okay.
Was that?
Sure.
Who?
Charlie.
On my favor?
Hi.
Close. And say, I'm looking at this. The hearing is open on the limit on the village zone.
Travis, could you turn share on again, please?
Yep. We can talk to you a little bit earlier. We said five seasons. Or a full meeting.
Yeah.
Just here to hang out with you guys.
We usually don't have too many people. Let the record show, we have engaged citizens.
Other than your written testimony from resident Allison McCollough in front of you, that's the only other information we've gotten notified by yesterday or today, so.
That might answer the question of.
Yeah. You had, you had indicated that back in 2013, you think it was part of the group project, moving from watershed to this. This should be some investigation.
I did, I did. A lot of them were finding this. Okay, so I don't know if you remember, I don't think you were on the board, but. I know you were, you were. Do you remember when Root Pipe came to give us the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, but this is a continuation of what's been going on in the sense of the last 10 years. But they did put together a plan for the Wind Point watershed. I forgot about the one in there. But that consists of areas of the coast of down through Milwaukee, Oak Creek. It was Wind Point, Calgonie down into Racine. It's this whole area. And I probably should have sent them to everybody, but I did.
I have it on the screen, President McCullough.
Well, that, that's just one part that I got.
Oh.
I got from the DNR website. But what they did, it's a whole plan to preserve our whole environment, but our waterways and the watershed. And there are certain things, recommendations that they have given to communities to help preserve your flora, fauna, the water, et cetera. And we agreed to, to do this. And one of the things was the setbacks, just a simple thing as a setback, just 25 feet. It gives us a little bit more room of space. It helps with runoff. And they had a diagram of just that 25 feet allows less pollutants to get into our rivers and whatnot. So that was part of the reason that we did it. It was to preserve our, our area. I can't tell you what Calgonie, Oak Creek, Racine did. But this is something that we agreed to. And 25 feet, especially with, you know, if you look at this little map up here, the beige colors are the designated wetlands that we have. And then all the purple are. We won't have it on here.
What indicators?
The indicators. And if you, you know, like you said, you dig down, everywhere you dig down, it's going to be wet. And some more wet than others. So to me, a hundred foot setback was put in there not only to preserve our environment, but it was to help rebuild our homes. You know?
Where are all those numbers? Indicators?
That's the name of it. Like if you go, if you make that bigger, that's, that's how they designate it.
Or two G.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. But yeah, the DNR is a, there's some critical stuff on this. I went down a hole. Trying not to get any sleep. But I, I do not agree with, as a citizen, I'm speaking as a citizen, because that's still allowed in. I do not agree with the change in the 25 foot. I think we need it. I think it was put there for a reason, to comply with this watershed agreement for our environment, for homeowners, for the community.
Well, I appreciate the research.
Yeah.
And there's always something, yeah, why?
Well, I, we asked that question a lot at the plant commission meeting. We agreed that we weren't going to change it because this question did come up at the plant commission meeting and we talked about it quite a bit. And we agreed we weren't going to change it. And I got on the phone, I started calling people, former board members, former president. I was like, why would this get changed? Well, I'm open member, I wasn't on the board. So that got housed with Marty Leisner's house.
President, President McCullough, could I jump in for a moment?
Uh huh.
Did we open the public hearing?
Yes.
All right. So forgive the formality here, but public hearing, you, you can't have a dialogue, right? There can't be a question and answer back and forth. The testimony has to be one way from whoever's providing the testimony to the village board. Otherwise, we bump into some.
Okay.
Violation, so it was.
I was speaking as a citizen because I had the.
Understood.
I apologize.
No, that, that's perfectly acceptable.
I was the only one even in testimony. I was explaining.
So Jeff, so this is the first time we've had one of these called board meetings on a zoning issue like this. So help us out. Do we just, do we just table the fact that if, if there's that, take that? Do we bow to it? Does somebody make a motion one way or the other? Just so that we're doing this the right way?
So anybody, good question. Anybody has the right to provide testimony, including an elected and appointed official, right? There's, there's no prohibition against a board member, a plant commission member, staff providing testimony. It's just the testimony can only be, or residents, right? Anybody from anywhere in that room. That testimony has to be one way. The village board can't comment on it, can't discuss it, can't ask questions. Once the hearing's over and you open up the village board meeting, that's when the Roberts Rule stuff and the protocols and all that stuff gets a little bit more flexible, flexible. And you can ask questions about the testimony that is provided. You can discuss amongst yourselves, you can ask staff. So the hearing itself is really testimony that comes to the village board without any back and forth.
Okay, so I should have just read my letter.
No motions, no actions that will come after 5:30.
Absolutely. So President McCullough's comments were testimony in support of her personal opinion about the matter before you. Once the village board portion of the, once the hearing's over and the village board starts, then all of you can ask questions of each other, staff, anybody in the audience.
So now that village president, as a citizen, is done presenting the letter that she wrote and the backup that she provided that showed up on the screen there. If nobody else has any further testimony or testimony from the public here, are, are we able to close the meeting or are we going to sit around here for another 15 minutes?
So another good question. So the hearing itself, and Travis, I'm just looking at the hearing notice. It's at five o'clock PM. The village board meeting is posted at 5:30, so the village board cannot start until 5:30. The general rule and the statutes don't say you must have a public hearing open for this minimum amount of time. There, that doesn't exist. But the number that has kind of coalesced legally over time is somewhere between 12 and 15 minutes is a sufficient time if no one has provided comment from the start of the meeting. That doesn't mean the last time somebody speaks, you have to start counting 12 to 15 minutes. So the meeting opened at five o'clock, sometime between 5:12 and 5:15. If there's no additional testimony, the village board can close the hearing. Once the hearings closed before the village board meetings open, you just can't discuss anything that was provided during the hearing or anything on the agenda. That was what the open house portion was for. So we can talk about the weather, we can talk about anything you'd like, but we can't talk about the matter that's before you until the village board opens.
Absolutely. I was on the plan commission before I ran for the board. And this subject came up a couple of different times. And each time it came up, most people on the planned commission, not all, but most people on the planned commission wanted to keep this at 100 feet, this post 75 because of the research that was done by the DNR and the Wind Point win.
Wind point, I'm sorry, Wood Point.
I've not, Wind Point. Root Pipe.
So again, forgive me at the risk of sounding like a very, very rude person. Right now, the only thing that can happen is testimony provided. I, I can talk, Scott can talk, Travis can talk because staff aren't bound by that. But as a board member, the only thing you do is provide testimony. Now, now to back off from my interruption, if what you are, what you began discussing or began stating, if you want to present that as testimony, you say, this is my testimony, then you can do that. So, so that's perfectly acceptable.
And no one else comments.
Correct. It cannot be a dialogue, it can only be a one-way statement.
And I just said, that was my testimony, what I just said.
Yes, ma'am. That's perfectly.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I see we have somebody on Zoom.
That's Jason from Art Smith.
Oh, okay. That's not me, okay.
I'm speaking as a resident with absolutely no knowledge of what goes on with this board. Just to be clear. So can we talk about the DNR? I'm sorry.
This is not testimony.
This is my testimony. In that regard, Wisconsin NR 117, you know, as advised by the DNR indicates 75 feet minimum for, for like weather. I don't know, the DNR was in on that decision. I like the 75. And I think as a resident, if someone wants to punch out their house another 25 feet increasing, increasing their, their square footage, that just adds up to new construction that comes to the bottom line against our, our living limits. My testimony is finished. And Jeff, if you'd like to speak to 117, you could read that little bit.
So I think you're referring to NR 115. And we did talk about it quite a bit. I can, I'll certainly talk about that during the, during the village board meeting. I personally have no testimony provide, to provide at the hearing. So it is 5:12 now. The protocol for closing a public hearing is to ask three times whether anybody else has any testimony. If there is no response after the third time, then you can entertain a motion to close the hearing. We still can't go into the village board meeting until 5:30, but at least then we can talk about stuff. The weather.
Is there any other questions? Anybody else want to speak?
That's one.
I thought there was somebody out there.
They weren't the ones that you might want to wait for the third one at least to see if they have something to add.
Is there anybody else that has, would like to make any testimony on the zoning ordinance? Okay, one more time, anybody else care to testify regarding zoning ordinance? And that's not.
So again, just a reminder, we can talk about anything right now other than the matter before the hearing and before the village.
Hearing is closed at 5:15.
I have a little showing. So very interestingly, I got an email through the actual archives. Hey, what do you want to know? I said, how many stuff about the link? Ever been on their what, their website? Yeah. It's overwhelming is what it is. So, you know, we'll email those through the archives. I said, you know, what do you want to know? Eight hundred and a thousand documents from France mentioning the lineup. I, you know, this came in yesterday. I'm busy. I will get it today. In 1986, in conjunction with, with the National Landmark Stat. Some member, I suspect from the board, wanted to say, hey, it would be a lot better if he could knock down the outbuildings, which include the oil house, right? The fuel house, the horn house and the storage building. And US Coast Guard, no, 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 no. And I thought that was a great decision. I just found it very interesting. Probably six or eight back and forths in that process. So.
The rationale is that they're part of the historical site.
The reason there's a fuel house that was not built during the time when the lighthouse was built is sometime in the 1880s. It was, kerosene was new back then. Or at least. It's not what we call kerosene today. There could have been a lot more pentane, like gasoline content in it because that's the first distillate to come off, is the light stuff. And it was, you didn't know how the flammability rating of the fuel would be. Somewhere, and I could never determine where there was a proliferation of lighthouses and then US Coast Guard said, no, we're not going to store fuel in lighthouses anymore. We're going to store them off-site. So when that burns down, we don't lose the navigation. I'm glad we didn't knock them down.
It's interesting because parts, different parts of it keeps going up in different places.
I'm sorry.
That, the light was, wasn't that, that the, I don't know.
Well, it's, it's a scene historical.
But wasn't it somewhere before it ended up there?
Most likely in Detroit, in the Coast Guard, one of the Coast Guard depots.
I think part of the reason that Wind Point War, he's always struggling with the lighthouse is the money that it takes to continually keep the, keep maintenance on these buildings. And that's probably why they thought better not get down because we don't have money.
I've often told people, if somebody offers to sell you a lighthouse for a dollar and other considerations, run. It's not a good investment.
It's not, but it's on everything. I mean, you know, you go around, we're seeing the, the lighthouse design, it's, it's a, it's a beacon. I mean, people come here, we have those clockwork lines, people come from all over the world.
Oh, it's people, they, they, people with the lighthouse passports. And we saw the stamp for it, bought the two, you know, they can get their passports stamped.
And we have people from all over the world. They probably were looking at these lighthouses. And this is a main attraction and it's one of the few lighthouses that's built as lighthouse keepers. So it has a real historical assets, you know?
An aesthetic, it's outstanding.
Yeah.
It's one of the. It is one of 11 that were built about the same, what they call, uh.
And PSC for the water. He goes, he's our favorite tour. God, something works out. So. So they're starting, they're, they're doing it right now. I've gotten some alerts today and that's like, that's true.
How long has that been typically? I know they take their time. The village is doing it. The largest lock in the world. It'll be interesting to see what they say. I suspect it was somewhere. I told Monica today, I don't know if they use our. Passed PSC reports to, to use for their decision, but the fact that we haven't done anything and we haven't updated anything according to the report because they don't know any better. They just go on the report. I don't know if they're going to jack us for that. Say, well, you should have been doing this all the time. What this or that, because I haven't been doing it. I said, we guys have no. Oh, that's soon. I hope that. I remember it was Sunday day and that's it. That's the only memory that I have is that we both, we told you. Don't remember it. I mean. Yeah. I suspect that. Two quarters we've been. The locks really aren't built before there was. Bleeding to that. You know, railroads were starting to get, get caught on here in the 1870s. By 1880. Cash reserves. They need that water. By 1800, this was the quarter that they paid for. Should be able to keep coming out of the reserve. Right? So what used to be a method to get timber, and that's what it was. Coming out.
And this did the presentation and February. And then referendum and stuff.
So wrong, usually where it could be shipped.
Again, case study of Pittsburgh.
By 1880.
Pittsburgh, it's like desperately needed. Like the fastest growing community and they can't afford to spend anything.
All right.
It was interesting.
There was actually that. They tried. Well, I think. Six of them I passed. I perused them before. I thought they all. Quite a difficult.
The majority of them.
Six of them. It's like, that's like 40%. It's pretty so. Up into some of it distant, like every. I can't, they said there were like 13 referendums for operational, operational referendum. Six paths, so it's not as good out. You know, I like, I don't know. That's like somewhere around 40%. That's not bad. Either, I bet. Just to be able to survive.
I think, I thought you said they worked on.
But yeah, yeah. The reference. I have to say, I think National Archives is in my future. Yeah. One of the things.
Total, it's only six of them work.
ABS lighthouse thing. I was talking with Tom. We have, you know, we had a good show, I told him, I said, but there's not enough. Yeah. Oh, yeah. You'll start seeing me just run. Right to Greenwich.
Okay, it's five thirty. We call these orders.
Of the United States of America, as to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come here first. President. Carmeus Barrow. Lyndon Johnson.
Here.
Your picture. Ralph Lauren. President. Charlie N. Here. Here. Okay. At this time, individuals can speak on any topic on the agenda for up to three minutes. Time extensions are at the discretion of the village president. No action can be taken on items not listed, except as a possible referral to committee staff or a future board agenda item. We have a paper.
It's up front.
I'm saying.
What we know.
So nobody wants to make it. They just all, you just all signed up.
There's one I'm signing.
Okay, no problem. So nobody wants to talk, you're just here to listen. Okay, no worries. Anybody on Zoom that wants to make a comment? Okay, so no comment. Okay. So. We're gonna get a chance to look at the. March thirteenth. Of the units. And anybody find a chair. I didn't. What question? Linda. Linda. She's, she's.
Yeah, sorry.
Was that an I I heard?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, um, at this time, um, we will hear from Jeff Sanders, uh, the zoning administrative report.
Uh, just a brief summary on it. Um, we've discussed with, um, the village of Sturt event, the process of updating both communities comprehensive plans. We're tentatively looking at an early fall start to the project. Um, we'll be looking at a much quicker start to the comprehensive recreation plan process. Um, Travis can elaborate on a postcard that'll be going out. A visual preference survey, basically an opportunity for residents and interested parties to review a number of images that are associated with potential outdoor recreation facilities in the village and assign a rating to them. Um, we do have a meeting scheduled, uh, at the Johnson Foundation Wing Spread Facility. Um. And then in terms of zoning related legislation, again, I'll try to provide this every month to you whenever there's a specific piece of law or a court case that applies in this case. Um, it's a kind of applicable to every municipality that has zoning regulations. So the town of Fond du Lac had a meeting to potentially issue a conditional use permit to a cell tower provider. Um, during that meeting, the town denied the permit. Um, but like all conditional use permit requirements, there is a written notification requirement whenever a CUP is denied. The town failed to notify the party of the written. The, um, of, in writ, in writing of declining the CUP. Um, the argument that the town made was the party was at the meeting, therefore they knew. Uh, the Court of Appeals said, yeah, that's not the way the law works. If your law says you must provide written notification, you must provide written notification. Uh, moral and story is, um, abide by the law, the cell tower got to build their cell tower. So whenever the ordinance says this, that's what we have to do. And that's it, unless you have any questions regarding the report. This is something I'll prepare monthly for both the Plan Commission and the Village Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, public hearing, review and possibly take action on amendments in the village zoning ordinance. So we just had a public hearing regarding the, um. Zoning ordinance moving the.
Excuse me.
Wetland. That act. Seventy, uh, hundred fifty seventy five.
So there are two items on the agenda tonight. Uh, the first one, as President McCullough just mentioned, was a reduction of the shoreline setback from one hundred feet to seventy five feet. Um, the other one was a different section. It's basically a housekeeping, um, issue. We had a, an, an error within the original draft zoning ordinance that we're cleaning up. So that's the section you see right here, if you can see on the screen. And it's basically saying that, um, enlargements are allowed, but they must comply with all the applicable standards within the zoning order. So if you have a house that is, well, house or a garage that is built um, too close to a property line, then would be allowed. That house or that, um, garage can be increased in size, but you cannot increase the degree of non-conformity. So those two are. The two for you tonight.
So we make separate, uh, motions. Then those, yeah.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Interesting, for some reason. Both were in agreement to make in one. Okay.
Even, even if that were true, it's generally best to do a motion for each one. Um, but the, the Plan Commission or the, excuse me, the Village Board has the, has the authority to approve both at the same.
Oh, I'll take the easy one. I'll make a motion that we approve item number two to amend section thirty six dash one five two C three as stated in our packet. Second.
Oh, fair.
Hi.
Hi.
Was that an I?
It was.
Okay. That's kind of hard here. Oppose? That's staying, okay, motion passes. Okay, so the second one is.
It's easy one.
Yeah, who took the easy one?
See, I'll take one. I pick a motion to, uh, on item one, men's section thirty six, forty five, forty six, forty seven, forty eight, forty nine, fifty, ten fifty one of those. When zoning to reduce the minimum shore guard setback from ordinary high water. For the principal structures, accessory structures in all. Zoning, the zoning districts from one hundred to seventy five. We would see a priority of one as a motion.
I'll set the top.
Another discussion, okay. Discussion. Yes, this is where we can discuss.
I'll start. Uh, I said, why not just conform with one fifteen and our one fifteen? And I understand that it used to be a hundred. But I used to get a ticket to one seventy on the interstate when I was fifty five. It's changed back then, this is now.
Me. Our, our land mouse hasn't changed. And. Um, our. Yeah, I wrote it in my letter, our whole, uh, water, everything, nothing, that hasn't changed. And everybody who's built a house here has had to comply with, um, a set, a hundred foot setback. I'll pass boards, pass planning commissions. This week you said, they, even our planning mission, we discussed it and we just opted not to change it. And the research I did back over ten years, this twenty five, yeah, over ten years indicated, nope, we're keeping it at the ten. And a lot of it had to do with the root pipe, wind, watershed study and all the recommendations that they had for keeping our environment and our water stream. And I think it needs to remain at one hundred. And as indicated, based on this, a one hundred foot setback is not going to impede a person putting the home, a thirty seven foot ranch style home, not a two story, a ranch on this, or thirty nine hundred square, whatever, third, uh, on this piece of property. And I personally do not think you should be changing in ordinance to accommodate one person. Because it does affect everybody in the future.
If, like I indicated before, it might allow somebody who wear a bump out wasn't possible before, they can bump out now. Uh, that goes directly to our bottom line for new construction and our, our levy limits. That's my only thought on that. Um, I constructed something in my house thirty, I don't know, I don't even know how long it's been there. But I could form to the hundred, it wasn't a big deal. Um, with some of this, I think there's a big difference between shoreline and wetland, but that, those distinctions aren't made too well.
Right, well, he and I are just.
Yeah.
Distinguish.
And then. There's a big difference.
We showed earlier that, you know, what is actual wetland and what's, um. And I forget the terminology, but it's designated.
President McCulloch?
Yes.
I believe Trustee Johnson has a comment she'd like to make.
Oh, okay.
So I'm in favor of this ordinance. I can put the three properties on, uh, top of my head, two that are actually on shoreline and one that is on a wetland that are not at a hundred feet. And I just think those limits, I don't know why we would go with the DNR recommendation. And it's kind of short sighted of us to limit future development. So I will work through, I guess, with this. Thank you.
President McCulloch and Steph comment?
Couldn't understand. She, her gist was similar to Charlie's. Yeah. And I didn't catch every word either, but, you know, similar to Charles, the standpoint of his. Then it's ten thousand. Yeah, well, but now is now, now to Charlie's point, it's a DNR. Reg, you know, regulation. Uh, I mean, I, I remember when I closed on my house twenty three years ago this summer. I was shocked when I saw the deed because the first time I saw a shoreline deed and I'm back, you know, but I asked, why do I have shoreline deeds? I didn't even know. And they're like, is it within a thousand feet of Lake Michigan? Oh, okay. So it went, mine deed didn't have anything to do with what might have anything to do with. I have a question for Jeff. Can we bust this out for shoreline and wetland?
Um, not easily. It would require rewriting the zoning ordinance, sections of the zoning ordinance and rewriting sections of the shoreline ordinance. Um. I guess. I, i- if I may, again, this is a testimony because the hearing's over. This is just staff comment for the, the board to consider. Um, the drawing that you see before you, those of you who are in the open house, um, we went through this process, but I just want to make clear for anybody who wasn't here. This matter is before the board because of this particular property, three, three, six Deepwood Drive. Now, that doesn't mean that the proposed change, if approved, won't affect other properties. It will, it'll affect every single property in the village that is currently located within, um, you know, seventy five feet or a hundred feet of an existing wetland or a, or a body of water. Um, but it came before the, before staff and eventually before Plan Commission, now before the Village Board because of this particular property. So if I may, I'll just give a very brief kind of explanation of what we're looking at here. Uh, the green lines are the twenty five foot setback from the right of way of the property. That's a, that's a zoning setback that has nothing to do with shoreline. Uh, the light blue areas are the existing wetlands in question. The blue line or the blue shading that you see on the perimeter, that's the current one hundred foot setback from each of these wetlands. So that's the rule in place now. The red shading is the seventy five foot setback. So if the Village Board approves the setback tonight, um, this would be the effective setback here. Now, if you notice, there's a house right here and I using Washington, excuse me, using Racine County's measurement tool. I measured it out to roughly twenty nine hundred square feet. Now, that's not the house itself, that's the footprint on the ground. So what I did is created a, a thirty seven hundred foot square footprint represented thirty seven hundred square foot footprint. Sounds weird to say, um, represented by each one of these brown rectangles. So essentially each one of these rectangles, if they were a single story house, would be, could be thirty seven hundred square feet in size. If they were a two story house, they could be five thousand fifty, five hundred square feet in size. The question that, um, staff has is if we, if the one hundred foot, if the reduction from one hundred foot to seventy five feet is necessary to accommodate reasonable development on this property. It's not, it's, it, it doesn't hold merit. Um, each one of these again would be a separate house. So not only could you put one thirty seven square, hundred square foot house on this property, you could put eight. Um, the limitations on this property have less to do with the setback and more to do with standing water close to the surface. And as I mentioned during the open house, if you're to walk out on this property, given the, the soil boring data that was provided and stick a shovel in the ground, pretty much any place, that shovel is going to come up wet. So the challenges on this property, although there are setbacks from wetlands, the primary challenges have very, very little to do with the seventy five foot or a hundred foot. So reducing it from seventy five foot means, and it's possible, you could build ten houses on this site instead of eight. So that's the background that this drawing was for.
Jeff, can I ask you a question or anybody on the board?
Yeah, it's open discussion right now because there's second, there was a second to the vote, so the discussion can continue. Yes, ma'am.
Um. Do we know or is there evidence of, uh, it seems to me, I saw something about this, but I can't recall what percentage of our wetlands, uh, the runoff ends up in Lake Michigan? I think that had a lot to do with some of what we're talking about. From what I remember when I was on the Plan Commission. And I don't know if you might have that information, but it appeared that quite a bit of the runoff from our wetlands ends up running into um, waterways that end up in Lake Michigan. Do you have any information on that? What percentage?
Well, so again, let me qualify my comment by the fact that I'm an urban planner, not a hydrogeologist, so I'm not expert in this area. Um, I'm also not familiar with the specifics, but I can make some general statements that are applicable to your question. One is, um. We often talk about surface water and groundwater as if they're different things. They're not, it's all the same. There's, they're interrelated everywhere. Um, there are situations where you have isolated wetlands and because of the soils present, things like clay that are very, very, um, impermeable, where what happens in that wetland or what happens in that pond stays in that wetland or pond. Um, but because of the relationship between the majority of the land in the village of Windpoint, Lake Michigan, because of the existing waterways, the streams and some of the wetlands within the village, the probability of transfusion between the two is probably high. I think the report you're referring to was a sewer pack study. Um, I'm not familiar with it pertaining to Windpoint as much as some other communities within the sewer pack region that are clients of mine. Um, and again, there is a lot of transitivity between wetlands, surface waters in general and Lake Michigan. I, I don't know that anybody's provided a quantifiable number. Um, it's possible, that's pretty difficult to do, very expensive to do, um, but certainly possible, but I haven't seen that. But the principle, I think the, the principle behind your question is that, yes, in, in certain circumstances, um, something that happens on the ground in one place can have an impact on Lake Michigan.
So we're not sure in what, what lanes within Windpoint do affect. Um. Like, isn't like Michigan, okay, make a general statement, you say, well. Well, this one might be okay, something else might not be.
Right. I'm just saying.
Yeah, so we can't, we can't just make a. Broad statement to say.
No. Oh. No, but there's. I, I'm just saying the type of sandy soil that we have. And from what I remember, uh, from the research that they talked about, this was many years ago. So I'm not, I'm unable to produce, you know, the, the source. But I just remember them talking about the, the, the wetlands in our area are are mostly, and I don't remember the percentage, I don't remember if there was a percentage put out there, but it is eventually going to end up in Lake Michigan based on where we are and the type of soil we have, which is pretty sandy. It's just kind of runs that way. So anyway, yeah. I just wondered if he had.
Surface. More than that, just rattle, that don't hit the groundwork. Next way it is, it would, when I looked at a study that Mr. Johnson did when it was. In others. They had mentioned that there was that, that two there. Where it had to.
Well, I have one, some, my neighbor is two, so he's a little older than me. And I probably could use two at certain times of the year.
Yeah.
That'll sleep off. Somewhere. Uh, uh, I've worked to a certain extent with Dr. Julie Kestner. I believe the, she's the landologist that helped recover North Beach. And I delivered sixteen hundred yards of sand to her projects. Uh, to that extent, I think it's fair to say that everything that falls rain and water that falls east of the interstate winds up here eventually. Yeah. And if it's on the other side, well, that's, it's going down in Mississippi.
And if it's on the other side, well, that's it's going down in Mississippi eventually. So, you know, uh, one of her projects was to create runoff basins on north of North Beach where she gets a ton of runoff and it to filtration sooner or later gets down to Lake Michigan. In regard to that, you know, we got, we have very sandy soil right up until you hit the clay and and that's it. I guess that's all I have to say.
One of the things that I read in the the pipe, um, on this watershed study, the information that they gave us was that extra twenty five feet. It's the additional filtering that prevents some of the bad stuff going into the waterways.
Charlie, Charlie makes a good point. My dad was a case and one time he told everyone, but I, he says, guess what, Rob, everything here goes west, the Mississippi and everything east goes through Racine and out to the lake. And I was like, that's pretty interesting that everything you think that the eye would go that far away, go the other way. All our rains and pressure good, we get the water like fishing, so that's good work. Yeah.
So I wasn't familiar with that in Windpoint, but I've worked in Washington County for the last fifteen, twenty years and the subcontinental divide is what we're talking about right now. And that is in Washington County, so it makes sense that it would extend, you know, roughly parallel to the lake, not necessarily exactly parallel south of there. So, yeah, that's correct. Falls on one side, it's a the lakes, like, excuse me, the Lake Michigan watershed and the other side, it's the Mississippi River drainage basin.
Well, there's a couple of ways to look at this. I mean, you know, I understand where Allison's coming from and where it's always been, and I understand where Charlie's coming from. And yes, this piece of land has sort of kicked it off. Um, but to Charlie's point, you know, you could have people that want to expand their properties that we are confined by the lack of being able to build and nice or happy. There's a couple of things to think about.
Okay, so are you ready to take a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's willing to vote?
I. opposed? Did you get my aye?
I got your, I got your aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Yes.
Abstain? You abstain?
No, I opposed.
Oh, so we got four?
Yeah. Second time.
Okay, so there's, we're missing somebody. Five, okay.
Five.
All right, I'm sorry, abstain is zero. So the motion does not pass. Okay, Four Mile Road, Scott Lewinsky.
Okay, so, uh, as you know, um, the village applied for LRIP funding for, uh, Four Mile Road and was awarded that from Racine County. So we have funds to repair the road on Four Mile. And since we're repairing the road, we decided to tackle the water utility also in the storm. So, um, brought it to the board and we sent out for RFP to, uh, get in contract with a consultant to design Four Mile Road and it was awarded to R.A. Smith. Jason is on the Zoom meeting. He is our project manager for this, uh, Four Mile Road. We are, uh, they gave a proposal and stuff like that. We submitted it. It was agreed upon, so, um, they're ready to rock and roll, but we are at the point of the design um, where the board needs to make a decision where we go from here. And as promised a couple of meetings ago, I was going to provide, uh, pictures of the plan of, uh, the road and the walking or pedestrian accommodation if the village should choose to go that route. Um, we do have, I did ask Jason to put together the pictorial pictures instead of looking at the map and or looking at plans with a bunch of numbers and stuff on there. So this gives a better idea as to what it possibly could look like. Um, as I sent you all the pictures yesterday to kind of take a quick look at and see and see what your thoughts are. Um, just so you know, going forward, so they're at a, they're not not necessarily at a standstill, but they're at a portion of the design right now where moving forward, they just need to know what direction that the village wants to go. Um, this is based all on timing of the project and to start the project and stuff like that. Um, depending on whatever option the village wants or the board wants to go with. Um, one of the options has an impact on utilities. Um, if one of the options is picked, one of the, some utilities would need to be moved and from what Jason tells me, uh, those utilities are not very cooperative and it takes a long time, typically six to nine months for them to fulfill that part of their end before anything can be done on our end. So be, uh, with that being said, it would be nice to know like if that is going to be a part of the impact of the project or not. Um, as you know, the beginning of the agree, in the agreement, there was a timetable of how this progresses and stuff like that. So, um, to get the bid, to get the project, to get it designed, get it at sixty percent, do the public informational meeting, let everybody see what's going on, have them ask their questions and then, um, move forward and start, you know, finish the design, do the bid proposal and send it out for bid, get the bid back and the timeline is to probably start doing the water main replacement in winter. Um, you get a better price. You get contractors that are able to employ their, uh, have their employees employed through the winter and you get a better price, which is good for everything. Um, so that's kind of where the where we're going with with that. Um, based on the designs that are on there, just so you know, these are concept type ones. They're not necessarily, this isn't the only design. So there are several of them. You can pick where, uh, you can have like Travis has this one up here right now. You can have eleven foot lanes with six foot paths on both sides. You can have only a six foot path on one side. If you pick that, that's attached to the road. You can have the other one that he has with the three foot, uh, paths on each side. You can have them on both sides. You can have it only on one side. You can have no paths at all. If you don't want anybody, if you don't want any pedestrian accommodation or you can pick the third option that has the pedestrian accommodation that is separate from the road.
Is that the one that affects the utilities?
I would probably, uh, let Jason speak to that, but yeah, I'm pretty sure that's the one that affects the utilities.
So I have a whole bunch of questions.
Yeah.
Later. All right, uh, so which, what do we have currently as far as lane width?
We have eleven foot, uh, driving lanes and then I believe that is, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, is that, uh, eight foot, uh, pedestrian accommodation that goes from
So.
path to Fairway Drive?
Sure. So first of all, thanks, everybody for having me. Um, my name's Jason Foit. Uh, my last name looks really funny and I apologize for that, but, uh, nonetheless, thanks for having me. Uh, I am the PM that's, uh, been working with Scott on this project thus far and a- as he said, and to answer your question specifically, uh, the existing section that we have out there right now is roughly eleven foot lanes with about a three foot shoulder. Um, most of that shoulder is gravel. Now, throughout the corridor and where we're talking about is from from Main Street to Lighthouse Drive. Uh, that that typical section does vary throughout and there is the one section that does have the existing, I'll call it, uh, bike path or pedestrian path, uh, that's attached to the existing, uh, road there and in that location, that's about twenty feet. So to repeat and to answer the question, the existing lanes are about eleven feet currently, typically throughout the entire corridor with about a three foot shoulder. And then in the location where we do have that, uh, bike path, that's about twenty feet. So it's about eight to nine feet, closer to nine feet in width.
So is the, is the plan to keep the road similar to where it is, meaning where it goes wide by Johnson? It stays wide or is it to keep, is it to bump and have those shoulders all the way from start to finish? Meaning, do we have eminent domain issues? Are we buying people's properties? Are we, are we, help me with that, please?
Sure, sure. So so right now, we don't know those, all of those answers because we haven't run all of the different scenarios through and that was one of the reasons why, um, Scott and I thought it was a gr- great idea to get on board with this now. Um, the intent here is to to get a section and run it through the corridor and and determine then what impacts we have if we take all three uh, different variations thereof and then fully design it. Um, that that's not in our best interest, nor is it in the village's best interest, in my opinion. So to, again, to answer your question directly, um, the intent right now would be to can make the existing footprint conform to a standard width, meaning have, if we pick one scenario, that's what we would run with now. If there is a reason and a desire to make adjustments, because I realize that it's a fairly lengthy corridor, if there's reasons or or needs to conform to something different, i.e. go back to the and keep essentially that eight foot, nine foot wide, uh, add on that is currently there, we absolutely can do that as well. But the intent here was more so to try and get a a uniform cross section throughout.
For that add on, is is water running through that side or is it on the other side?
Water is running on the south side of the road from Main Street all the way to Lighthouse Drive.
Okay, so it is on that side where it's wider.
Correct.
Yeah, well, that would get torn up anyway in
Correct.
the rebuild because for that paved section, it's covered, but everywhere else it's just.
Kind of, yeah, like running the shoulder in the ditch area.
Okay, okay. So, again, when I moved into the village almost twenty three years ago, they were just repaving it and I caught the tail end of it because the gentleman I bought the house from was a realtor and it sounded like there was a lot of back and forth. There wasn't a lot of appetite to like blow up, let's say, go all around the village with, let's say, a wider, a bike lane. Um, I'm just speaking for myself. I don't like the utility piece, meaning if we don't have, I think that must be your number three. I've never had a problem and I'm just speaking for myself, never had a problem with the width at eleven feet now. Um, so I I'm more of one if if we can have the uniformity and have enough for a bike lane, like I think number, what is it, this alternate two, and again, I have to speak for myself, you get a little bit wider shoulder. You're not taking up a lot of people's land, you're not moving utilities, it doesn't seem like lanes stay the same. You know, do we get any help with the government with regards to bike lanes? Because I love how cities actually put, uh, stamps on random sections of road just so they can get rebates from the government, uh.
Well, so there 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 are at times various different, uh, funds that you could apply for in terms of grants, loans, different things through the state. Um, there, those are out there. Um, in this case, for this project, I'm not anticipating any of that, uh, money to be applied for or to be proposed to go toward this project.
Why? I think we're we're not necessarily hoping for it. I'm just bringing it up and Trustee Bagley, who just said, why? Would there be a reason why?
Was that just an assumption you made?
Or we have a reason, we we wouldn't put an application and at some point, I'm not saying this to do it now.
So typically, those are what are called tran- transportation alternative projects or TAP grants. Um, you absolutely can go after them. I'm not discouraging you from doing so. They are, uh, highly competitive to attain and there are, um, very, very many, um, steps in order to get to it, such as a bike and pedestrian plan for the entire village, how that's implemented, how that's funded. Um, so it's it's, there's a lot more to that. Uh, if you want, want to go down that road, that's that's fine. Um, but there's a lot more to it than just, uh, merely like filling out an application or some or tossing your head into the ring, for example.
All right, so so humor me because obviously we're going to have to go around the whole village and put in water. This is just step one and the roads come with it. So if let's just say we took option two, which is the least intrusive, ran that all the way around, you get a better bike lane on both sides, so you're going to get a couple of feet off some property and not be too invasive with folks. Would then maybe steps two and three, if the village got together and put a plan like you just discussed for the second and third sections, we could say, hey, look, state, this is an extension of what we already built. These bikes are going to be here and that we could maybe make a case for it down the road.
I would agree with that. I'm shaking my head. Yes. I don't know if you guys can see me or not.
Yeah, I can see it. Okay.
Okay.
Those are all the questions I had. I'm more of a lesser intrusive, keeping it simple type thing.
What's the difference between one and two as far as you think it, if you go to one? Is that taken out of the ditch section or?
Uh, one is there's, well, there's six foot on both sides, so the footprint of the, you know, of the of the construction is just going to be a lot more. But it gives.
It doesn't look like it takes.
You're getting free work either way, it sounds like, right?
Yeah, but where is it coming out of? I mean, you've got a ditch section here. Is is the ditch section the number one smaller than number two?
No, I don't think so. No, the ditch would be a ditch that would be able to handle a ten year start with that. Am I correct on that? Yeah, so it's all depends on, you know, you just don't want to deep ditch you on something that's manageable, so.
Um, to to answer your question directly, the the alternatives that you see in the color are, I'll call them more schematic. Yes, they're drawn to scale in the sense that the the lane widths are wider in, you know, one, one alternative versus another or the shoulder is or et cetera. But it it's more to represent more of what it, more of a picture. When we go through and complete our design work, we are utilizing, uh, three D modeling and a corridor in which we're taking both the horizontal and the vertical geometries and incorporating the design and associating this to the existing, uh, topography and the existing components that are out there today. So that's the the pictures that you see and in the colors are that. Um, once we get, and it's a great question in terms of, hey, this this road is, uh, what is it? It's two plus four plus four, it's eight foot wider. You know, alternate one is essentially eight foot wider than alternate two. And where is that land coming from compared to alternate two? The answer would be that we're going to cha- adjust those four slopes and the back slopes of that ditch in order to stay within the same footprint of the right of way. The right of way out there that's existing varies considerably, but it's essentially about, and because it's a long corridor again, but you're you're ranging from thirty three foot per side, so a total of sixty six foot up to approximately an eighty foot corridor or just a little bit more than an eighty foot corridor. So you are correct in asking that question in terms of where does, where does this come from? But this is giving us more of a pictorial representation of what we're proposing as opposed to the nitty gritty details of the actual design. I hope that answered your question.
Very like, Mark, because the, uh, the shoulder, the shoulders portion is wider. If somebody is disabled, we'll have to go to the side, it's more safe.
It is, what is the minimum for a shoulder?
The minimum for your shoulders out here is going to be your, um, it, well, it depends to some extent. So you can't prohibit, you cannot prohibit bicyclists or pedestrians from utilizing the the right of way. Um, in the option three, where we're showing the o- the off street, if you will, bike path or asphaltic path, might multi-use path. There we do have the three foot paved shoulder and that is the absolute minimum that you can have there. If, but because we're having and introducing an all asphaltic off street path in this case, which is still within the right of way, but to the, you know, offset from the roadway, um, that that I would agree with. If in the event that you went without the, uh, off street accommodations as such as shown in alternative three, then I would strongly recommend having a four foot paved shoulder, which is shown in alternate two.
I understood that there are hybrids. This, these are just three examples. You could make it any way you wanted to do it. So for the purpose of discussion, you could do, uh, you know, not the third option, uh, which is the separate path altogether. Uh, what we have is kind of a path on the south side for a short, well, it's a fairly extensive distance from Main Street, one from the the path, uh, at the Anomology Center and it goes up to, what what road is it?
Uh, it's kind of like, kind of like dead ends at like Fairway, but it's kind of like by the, kind of by the park and it's.
And you said that's eight foot, now what if that were to be six feet and you had a three foot shoulder on the other side, on the north side, you keep your eleven foot lanes. That pretty much is the minimum amount of width that you would be taking up. It provides for a broader shoulder than you know, may exist in several of the places we're currently. I guess the shoulder is gravel now, and this would be asphalt, but that's possible, right? You can do a three eleven, eleven, six kind of combo. You can do it any way you want to, but then is, if you were to have a a combined bike path, is there an optimal width that on your versions, three, it says six to eight, well, that's a lot of real estate. But you don't want people running into each other, is is six kind of the minimum?
Six is your minimum if you're gonna quote unquote, call it a path. Sidewalks and ADA correct, so so sidewalks, typical ADA the American Disabilities Act, ADA standards suggest a five foot wide sidewalk. But typically, then the bikes are not on that path, they're within the street. So it would be my recommendation, and for that matter, many bike and ped facility manuals that suggest six foot is the minimum width that you'd want to go with, and up to eight foot is is I say, I would say more desirable in the sense of allowing for passability and usability for bicyclists and pedestrians at the same time.
My guess is that part of the trade off may be the amount of width that it takes if it were going to be consistent from Main Street all the way to Lighthouse. And then should that desire be to extend that, we're talking about just this Main Street to Lighthouse and how we could make that improve from where we're at. And I'm just wondering if, you know, even with this six foot, can you do, even but I've seen, you know, stripes down the middle of that. So that you kind of tell people that they stay to the right and to the left, and I mean, it's common sense, you don't run into each other, but you know. If you're gonna have a combined bike pedestrian path, that seems to be, and and I don't see that there are ten thousand bikes on that path. The volume and traffic is not gonna be that that high, it may increase if we encourage, you know, incur the the design to do that, but nonetheless, I mean, you could probably make some sort of a accommodation of how it's striped, is that allowed or not allowed?
Sure, you you absolutely, you can stripe it. I have many communities that choose not to because of then the perpetual maintenance thereof.
And it's costly, the striping is, I get that. And also, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any ADA thing, and if you cut a six foot section with striping, that all of a sudden you're two foot under the, you know, the ADA walking, that that doesn't exist, right?
Correct.
That was all I had, I'm sorry. So I always kind of envisioned that this would be a continuation of the what of the south side path with no path on and a bidirectional path, no path on the north, just south. I see a possible, I I don't like to walk, if I'm walking, I don't like to walk with my back to traffic. Right, so if I'm eastbound on just a single sided path, is everybody following me, just pass south side only? And remove the entire roadbed over a couple of feet to accommodate somewhere in the neighborhood of six. From what I've heard, six is enough to to handle bidirectional traffic on a path, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so are there some disadvantages of only doing doing single sided, other than the fact that, you know, sometimes you're going contrary to the automobile traffic as recommended by everybody who are on walks or bikes? And I'm just bringing up a safety thing to what you're saying, do you really want to have one side? I get I get that, because I think that was some of the talk before I moved out here, and you're just gonna take that, but then they didn't want to take people's land. One side, you make it wide enough, you invite almost collisions in there and people pumping out, you know, and so I
I sent an email, and my question was, how would the segue on four mile to go around Lighthouse Drive?
Whatever we do
So we have to be thinking, you know, because we're gonna end up doing the whole thing. And you know, there's parts on Lighthouse Drive where the lane ends and the guardrail is there. So you know, you're gonna have to pull back and you know, you don't, you're gonna infringe on people's land, it's just a fact.
Well, right away.
And the fact is, you don't want to be taking half somebody's front yard for this.
All I know is, yeah, I've built some stepping stone paths, so this is way beyond me. But my opinion is three feet's too narrow for any sort of traffic.
I agree with you.
Four or five feet, but if we went to six feet, in my mind, that's enough for bidirectional foot traffic, could like traffic.
Well, and that's why, you know, one of my questions was gonna be like, can you go where you end up narrowing it once it goes around? And widening, like narrow it on the east side and widen it so that, because obviously, you know, you're not gonna go, you can't go over the lake. I mean, I I I'm just thinking about the transition. And to make it consistent throughout, obviously, I think, you know, six foot, it would be great to have six feet on each side. We don't have the space. And it's trying to find something that will accommodate our walkers, our bikers and our cars. You know, safely, because this, it's a very active village, and the one complaint that, you know, we hear all the time is, you know,
Let's let's put one thing to bed if we can, this should be real simple, does anybody have a problem with the width of our roads right now? Yes or no? With the with the width of the lane?
Automobile roadway.
If then we say, hey, we don't want to infringe on anybody too much, we we keep the road at eleven and then we pick up a couple of feet to make it safer on the sides.
My train of thought will come back in a second. If understandably, as we go around the curve in the future, we're gonna be pushing the roadbed or down four mile road, we're gonna be pushing the automobile roadbed a couple of feet to the north. That being said, we may obviate the necessity to take down some giant trees on the north. There are some giant trees that if we widen, if we stay centered where we are now, and we widen to five or six feet, some of those trees are gonna that's a major expense.
You might have to, and again, this is where move it and curve, the best thing to do would be take more land from the south, the homework like that.
Well, just so you know, the water main does switch. So it goes down the south side of the road on four mile road, and then when you get to just east of Beacon, around that Wind Point Drive, it switches and it crosses over to the east side of the road, and then it when you get through the curve and down Lighthouse, it runs on the east side of the road now. So it does, so when we redo the the water main, chances are, a lot of those are gonna be affected anyways because of that. And I we I did find an old map, so back in the sixties, that curve at Lake Lighthouse and Four Mile was never like that. It was like a, almost like a stop sign, ninety degree right turn. So it was dead, it was dead straight in the middle of the right of way. Then at some point, they decided to make it a curve. And to make it so it was safe wise, but by an engineer designed it, they had to push the road. And it is literally like three feet from the right of way. Yeah, on the outside curve of Lighthouse Drive. And the gentleman that lives in the White House has a lot of right of way in his front yard, so the whole, they pushed the whole road over. So I'm just saying that there's not a lot to work with on the east side. Lot to work with on the other side, but
Which is a good thing, actually.
To a certain extent, yeah.
Homeward in that area, from the standpoint of safety of the project.
Yeah, but we're not, it's, I mean, the intent is not to like run a road and and move it closer to a person's house.
No, it never is, right, but there's still a lot of factors that go into it.
Yeah, but in regards to the trees, those that might, just because of the water main that's in the area and having to replace it, it just may happen. You know, so
Certainly be damaged the loop system, if you're digging now. So is the water still gonna cross at that point, then from from south to to east, or is there design thoughts on somehow changing that or?
That would be a Jason question, if there's any thoughts, I know he didn't really, we're not really thinking of Lighthouse, I mean, we are, it's in the it is in the plans and it's part of this design to a certain extent, but the nitty gritty of getting down to like where the placement of the water main may or may not be as it crosses the curve in the Lighthouse, that's not really part of this project, so. But it is something that's been thought of.
We don't end up up here all night, because you you guys just want to take away from us, I think the consensus, unless I'm wrong, is eleven foot lanes are fine. So then, what are we talking about, the shoulders then? My only thought is, is it, it's kind of it would allow us, if we do south side path, well, I'd like this professional opinion from Jason, what do you think about bidirectional, single sided pedestrian and bicycle traffic in a six foot path? Can they coexist?
I would say yes.
Oh, it is, but but again, I I I don't have a professional opinion, like I said, I've done step stones. And I have no engineered opinion.
Ask a quick question, and I, we would have a minimum three foot shoulder on the other side, no matter what, right?
Correct, that's the intent, yes. If if we wanted to mix and match, we absolutely can, but right now, my thought process was minimize the width of the road if we're going with an off-street path. If we are going to minimize our overall footprint in general, then my recommendation would be four foot lane, or excuse me, four foot shoulders and eleven foot lanes.
That's what I like.
I like that too, but
I like, I like, I like number two.
I'm thinking ahead of of going into
Well, that's the other thing, we're two, two goes in the Lighthouse Drive a lot better. I know the golf course is gonna get redone, you know, or fully steal from the golf course, and you gotta go to Prairie Curve, where, yeah, there's room to the south side, you could lean into that, and you could get up, but how much do you really take then from the people? Now, now we're abutting, like the city, have you seen those houses?
Are we talking three mile?
Yeah, then we're talking three miles.
Yeah, the the right of way is only half the road, so technically, so we don't own, I don't think we can encroach on to like what would be the backyards of those individuals on from the city or scene, so I don't think they're I don't, it it's in the infancy and it's just quick looking at it, but I don't think we could double path or go on both sides on three mile, just because we'd have to buy, you know, we'd have to do buy land from Racine in order to do that, I think.
What would be eleven and four fit in there without buying?
Yeah, we could still do that. I just don't know if we could have it on both sides on three mile.
May, I just want to make sure that I'm being absolutely one hundred percent transparent and clear here. So in any of these conditions, and it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter which one of the alternatives you're looking at. If you could, whoever's, I don't know who's running the the PowerPoint or the 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 slides that are on the screen, it, could you zoom in to the interface between the shoulder and the gravel shoulder? Pan down, so you can kind of see that the the modeler has done a nice job, I think, here, where you, and I can't point. So there's a four foot paved shoulder, but on every si- right there, yes, perfect. That little darker gray granular area, there will be a gravel shoulder to transition us from the asphalt to the ditch. And what that does is that allows us to have an established edge and support that edge of that asphalt. Okay, so just so that people are are a hundred percent clear on that.
Yeah, because I I think from the picture, isn't that front slope of the ditch, that's not gravel, that's supposed to be
No, that'll be grass, yes, that the the color, the color didn't come through real great.
I want to just return to one other thing, if you go with a four four option, you're never gonna get any tap grant money, most likely, right?
Correct, correct.
Thank you, would it have to go to five or six then?
Six, I would suggest at a minimum.
And and does it have to be six on both sides or six out of one?
What, once you're, when you're, so the whole concept of I I and I apologize, I don't know who brought it up before, but that was, it was a great point in the sense of having your back to traffic. So if you're on the, if you're on the roadway, that's why we've separated in the case where we have the separation with the ditch between the asphaltic path and the shoulder. That allows the bidirectional traffic to be allowed there. If you wanted to say, let's say, put a a three foot or a four foot shoulder on the north side of the road and a six foot shoulder on the on the south side of the road, that's not really going to, that won't qualify, in my opinion, for the tap grant monies either, because they don't want to have folks walking the wrong direction, if you will, or the op with traffic if they're going against traffic on that one side, does that make sense? Did I explain that well?
I retract any ideas of one sided, so do I. But that being said, then we get into trouble if we move on Lighthouse, then something else has to happen.
So I guess what's our consensus to have these folks move forward, is it eleven with four?
Yeah, that's Well, it is, and the other thing is, is to to his point earlier, when I asked it, we're not gonna get for first third anyway, so how much would we get for the next two sections? That's anybody's guess, and at that point in time, we're trying to blow this out, we're upsetting neighbors on the road. Yeah, we're making a really nice project, don't get me wrong, we're also adding costs probably, because obviously, you're adding more asphalt and things like that. So I, four is wider than what we have now as a page, so I mean, that's gonna be beautiful.
No, I I I think more than four, you're in the heartache territory.
I would agree.
So I'm clear, four, eleven, eleven, four.
If I, if I may, one one more thing, I I always just like to reiterate what I heard, so that I am a hundred percent certain that what I am what I heard is is what you guys mean, and that is alternative two with the four foot shoulders and the eleven foot lanes is what, at this point in time, we are going to move forward with, correct?
Yeah, I I mean, I don't get it, I see people fidgeting and maybe wanting to say something, technically, they can't. Because, you know, citizen comments at the front, and we'll have time for that, but you folks just wanted us our best feelings and ideas to then bring to the public, so that they can give us feedback, they can tell us where we're wrong, what they feel and all that stuff, right? So you could get an idea on costs as well.
You need design direction from us that limits the number of choices down to something that's manageable and affordable within the for the design, which is not awarding the project.
It's not indicated, what is ditch section size? I I know you said there was still enough ditch room, is is a ditch, you're gonna obviously give ditch size, you know, now that you map map this out for for residents and us, so we know where the ditches are gonna be and all that.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's, the ditch is only on the one side, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, we'll have public informational meetings and stuff like that for the public to come in, take a look at the designs and stuff.
All right, so I will make a motion to instruct staff at R A Smith to go for the beyond typical alternate two, to bring those plans to the public for review, discussion. to bring those uh plans uh to the public for uh review, discussion.
Thank you, everybody, for your time, and I appreciate the input, and I hope everybody has a great evening.
Thank you, and you'll see when you're, the next, the next time. Thank you. Okay, moving on. First, no finance and interest, please, uh, Chris Ruffin.
Alright, uh, we just had one thing that we dealt with, and that was, uh, as I switch around to all my different emails here, uh, that was regarding, uh, if you would possibly take action on updating section fifteen in H R manual overtime cost compensatory time, if I can talk. For now, these are hourly employees, so it previous uh administrator, uh, N P F I C had come up with this language from Craig Travis, right, you know, and then it didn't get in. But again, um, we didn't uh catch it. That wasn't staff, that was us reminding if we're to get added, then their staff reminded us. And so we got the ver-vision, I'm trying to scroll through your apologies. Everybody take a look at it, questions. So basically, I'll I'll make a simplistic uh statement, so let's say a few, a month ago, right, I'll just use Scott, Scott came in, uh, plowed on Sunday, let's say Scott, you know, would have had overtime, Scott could technically say, hey, guess what, don't pay me bank that as comp time, and I'll take it off some other day, and then I'll get paid by overtime by ten and a half. And so that's basically, correct me if I'm wrong, the way simple, simplest way for us to look at it.
He gets a, uh, he gets an hour and a half of comp time, right? That's how it reads.
Okay, well.
At at his regular.
Yeah, it is, either way, I I appreciate you bringing that up, yes, thank you. So any, anyway, he's, he, they would not get shorted the overall amount of pay that is owed to the employee. Um, they can earn a maximum of forty hours compensatory time in a calendar year, and they need to use them by November fifteenth. If they don't, they will get paid out then for those hours. And so, uh, and the reason why we picked November fifteenth is obviously we live in Wisconsin, you start to get you know, snow season and things like that, we don't want there to be an issue with um, people not being able to use this time, people not being able to be here, and then staff obviously knows if they get to that point in time, they still would get you know, compensated properly for that. So that's what we passed, do a three oh vote. Anybody have questions, comments?
Let's have a motion first.
Oh, my bad. I'll make a motion, that we uh update the human resource policy, because this is section fifteen as in our packet with the updates that are highlighted.
I see, I, you guys best be quiet. Um, okay, now you can.
Questions, concerns? Call it boss.
Okay, on the camera.
So I got, let's be a place, we're gonna have more budget stuff than C F P next month.
Uh, the Parks, Recs facilities, Lighthouse Committee met on April first to approve the will be approved, the uh Village of Windpoint Visual Preference Survey. Uh, to support research that will engage Windpoint residents in the development and completion of the Windpoint Comprehensive outdoor recreational plan. Soon, all residents, and I don't know if Travis says the date on when it will be launched, but soon residents will receive a postcard that will invite them to take the visual preference survey. The visual preference survey has images of recreational activities, green spaces, uh, play equipment, those kinds of things. We're hoping residents will take it so that we get um their preferences. That's the research we're doing to complete, to continue with comprehensive plan. That'll be on May fifteenth, uh, and I think Jeff mentioned this earlier. May fifteenth, all residents will be invited to a community engagement event at the Johnson Foundation at Wind Spread uh, to hear the results of the visual reference survey and to engage in a discussion about the future planning for recreation in the Village of Windpoint. That's pretty much it.
Okay, um, the committee gave the go-ahead for the Department of Public Works to move forward with working with Mead and Hunt on building the uh, the graphical information system platform, and this is something that's been kicked around for a number of years now. Um, and the choice of uh Mead and Hunt uh came after reviewing uh five uh proposals, and they were deemed to be the best. And actually, uh, they were below its cost uh for the initial phase of it, so uh not only was their proposal superior, or followed in superior, in terms of the interest that they've demonstrated uh to Scott in uh working with him, so we're very, that this is a budget that I'm instantly want to have. Scott is uh his recommendation, and the committee uh gave him the go-ahead to work with Mead and Hunt, so that's underway now. Uh, we have a number of three other actions similar to what we just talked about with the the with the the lanes on four mile, these are uh ordinances and documents that are gonna be uh generated as a result of the construction project for four mile road. Uh, for instance, we went over uh the draft ordinance language for the right-of-way for trees, and we're gonna have more information after that's reviewed with Attorney Larson. And so that's coming back to committee. We also went over a draft ordinance for utilities in the right-of-way. That's another thing that Attorney Larson is gonna be reviewing and getting back to us. And then we also reviewed the construction minimum requirements document, which is really like a spec uh for, you know, what uh, what kind of concrete or asphalt or what materials they're using for the water main and so forth. Uh, that'll be uh brought brought back to the committee once um that document is is cleaned up. So there's a lot of stuff that's underway and it's being driven by um, you know, the the work that is being done on the four-mile road uh construction project, and so it's coming back to committee, and when we have it uh in a form that we can move forward, uh Scott brought the ones today, we'll recreate the others still.
Might I, might I, might I interject you, just make a comment about, you know, you said the quality of the construction, so the the road.
Technically not, cuz it's a report.
Okay.
But you could follow up with staff or board members after.
Don't use the same people who's in Main Street going to the zoo. That road held up for what?
That's af- that's after the proposal is approved and put out for bid, so. But it's putting the specs, but importantly, it's putting the specs out um, so that uh we can gauge compliance with, you know, what's actually happening with.
And this will, this will come back in front of the board, it just has, it, you guys will all see it and vote on it after, so. Lots of homework for us to get that point. Uh, it was a very busy month for us, it was two hundred and twenty-five calls for service are generated by the officers, I'll try to go through the list, I have quite a few items to note. Uh, just a follow-up from last month, I know that Mr. Wollson sent me an email yesterday, I did, uh, I was able to make contact with Five K Events who's uh hosting and organizes the Lighthouse Run. Uh, and after that meeting, I am confident in uh at least most of their planning capabilities. Uh, and we have, uh, they have offered to pay for the officers uh to work that event. It's still unknown if the city of Racine is going to be actually handling their portion of the Lighthouse Run. Last year, they did not have the staffing uh to assist, uh, but we still did that, but we did that out of our own pockets. I, they did reassure that they were supposed to pay us last year, however, that did not occur, uh, and they said that they would not make that mistake again. So I think that moving forward, I think that's gonna go to committee or at least to the uh permit approval process still.
But no bad pay, if they admitted that they were supposed to pay us, but they didn't? That's my question exactly.
Are continuing, so uh just, uh, you should have received the email from Wind Spread or Johnson Foundation, so just to ensure to register for the emergency management uh training that we have in May. Uh, we do have a kit, we're still in the process of planning for officers to train at Prairie School for active threat and active shooter situation. Uh, hopefully while obviously the students are out, hopefully August of this summer. Uh, we received almost nine hundred dollars in traffic grants for the hours worked last month uh for our officers. We applied for and received a thousand dollar grant from the Department of Transportation uh for new portable breath test, that would have cost us uh another eight, eight hundred dollars, and then we have the testing equipment uh for the uh bi-monthly checks that we need to keep a log of. Uh, moving into the calls for service, as you see in the incident summary list, uh, just some things of notes, uh, we have two dog bites at the same residence, uh, both to a child, uh, pretty significant injuries. Uh, the paperwork was submitted to the county health department, and it is our understanding that the uh dog is no longer at the residence. Uh, assist Caledonia and assist Racine Police, as staffing shortages continue uh with every police department. Uh, the, we had eleven requests from last month to assist them on calls for service outside of our village uh on priority calls for service. Uh, two, uh, on two separate traffic stops, uh, we cleared two warrants, two per, uh, two persons were arrested for warrants that were outstanding for possession of heroin and possession of cocaine traveling through our village. Uh, we had three actual physical arrests for either disorderly conduct, domestic abuse uh in our village, and we just, well, same guy got arrested yesterday. One uh O W I that was pretty significant, one of our officers on proactive patrol, observed a vehicle northbound on North Main Street uh in the southbound lanes, uh, and that uh individual was arrested for that O W I and resisting arrest. We had one tree branch down, we talked about overtime recently about uh Scott and D P W, uh, a kind citizen of ours, uh, traveling through our village, but a tree down with our officer out on the road with his lights activated. Uh, did not slope for that officer and decided to uh jump that tree, which then actually pushed that tree out of the road, which saved the village money, but also endangered the safety of our officer, the dashboard footage is a, is is rather scary to watch. We talked about that, we talked about that, we're seeing a you wa- if you wanna go to the citations, obviously you guys can go over that if you have any questions, but we're seeing a little bit more of an influx with two different individuals were arrested or cited for possession of open intoxicants in a motor vehicle off traffic enforcement and then possession of drug paraphernalia. So unfortunately, people like to drive around our area uh after having a few cocktails and to enjoy the scenery, uh, unfortunately, when it's too much, or at least they're drinking there. Extended speed study, you'll see Lake Meadow and Prairie still at that location till at least the students are out. I'd like to place that somewhere else, maybe on four mile with the data, uh, to be able to actually pull through the cloud storage, storage to send you guys more reports as far as how many vehicles you're traveling, I'm not sure if that will assist you with what you talked about with uh your plans for four mile road development. That's all I got.
Uh, I wanna let you know, on plan commission, we are looking at a short-term rental ordinance, so we're working on that. And and looking at oh, we looked at the B, we're looking at the B ordinance too, I think we're going back to that. And it'll come, come back to here. Um, big reminder on Saturday is the Easter egg hunt. You've got kids, bring them home, eat the Easter, but be here eleven o'clock. And I don't think there's any snow in the forecast. For those of you, uh, just a reminder, um, that Racine, uh, Kenosha Bi-County Council of Governments.
We have to choose between Easter egg hunting and the Bi-County.
No, I could go into the Bi-County, you get to go to the Pritzker Museum. It's great. Uh, for those of you who are not doing anything on Wednesday, April sixteenth, they are having the Jonathan Delgrave Youth Development and Care Center Community Open House. It's a long one, um, from forty-six P M, and that's over up at, uh, it's at twenty-three hundred three mile road, just off of west of Douglas, uh, on this side of railroad tracks, and that's from forty-six P M. So that is open to the community.
Did you wanna mention?
Oh, well, I wasn't sure about that. I wasn't sure about that one. Um, well, we do have a low.
Well, I said there was another thing, there was another thing, I thought you wanted to mention, but the notice of the board vacancy, I don't know.
Oh, my gosh, yes. I hope you guys here, people are here for this. We have a board vacancy. Okay, so pay attention, this is what we do. Um, you can apply anytime between now and when, May, May first? And then at our next meeting, we'll talk to you, ask you questions, and then we'll vote on to get skinboard, and you would love to serve with us, cuz we're good for it.
The pay is.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, my gosh, see, I get. But yes, we, um, Elizabeth is, uh, do not run reelection, um, and we are definitely gonna miss her. But you, you really could use another person, cuz we don't want someone to be on board. I can't believe nobody whatever. Um, so think about it, tell all your friends, we only need one person. But it's actually, it's it's really good. It's been a good experience for me. Uh, I started as a trustee, I was a trustee for a year, and then I got hooked into being a trustee. We did, but it's actually been pretty good, and I have learned a lot more than I ever thought I would. And I go down rabbit holes all the time on research on this village, um, but it's it's been very good, you see good people. Really good people to work with, and we have a wonderful staff. Now that we have great staff, and there's no vacancies, it's very easy.
It makes it a lot easier.
It really does.
Can I ask you for a second?
Um, yes, you can.
Uh, I think I wrote about this in my little thing, that I sent as an addendum. This is, uh, citizen participation is a necessity if we wanna develop social capital. Every person here has a little network of friends. You have an opportunity to bring your friends' views here. It adds cohesiveness to our village, and I think when I add it up, I'm making four bucks an hour. It's an extraordinary, I find it an extraordinary amount of work when you're new, because you've gotta really catch up with six subcommittees and see what they're talking about, but I've, I I find it I'm not gonna go overboard and say it's rewarding, it's quite interesting and it's a challenge and uh you know, make a motion. Tell your friends that there is an opening here, and um, you're good, it's the easy way in. Come up with a good story.
Yeah.
Gavel goes down here, then you're it.
That's how you get them.
It really is. This is the way to it, it's, it's, uh, and you you dare to speak for your friends.
You know, I've been on this board uh for a year, and I really enjoy it because I get involved in the what what's going on in the community, it forces me to know what's going on and to participate, so it's it's very rewarding from that aspect. And four bucks an hour.
Do you count the, all my emails that you sent to that too, do you count that hourly rate?
We did have an administrative thing that was close to one dollar. Hey, we didn't know we were doing it all.
But it it's it's you speaking for your community, you know, so it it's really something to consider in the upcoming year.
I'm the one that's leaving the board and not because of any kind of conflict or anything. Like, these are wonderful people to work with. Everybody here is very invested in what they do. And I don't think I've worked with people who are more committed to the, the future of this village than this board. I never was on the board before, okay. And part of the reason I'm walking away is because I have, I'm going to say it out loud, it has nothing to do with leadership or, or administration. It has to do with my ninety-seven year old mother who needs assistance. And she lives in different places, Florida and Indiana. So, and that's where my commitment has to be. But the, the reason I feel comfortable walking away is because of this board and the leadership that is here and because of the staff. I, I can't tell you how relieved and happy I am that we have the staff that we have. It, it's their top notch all the way. And I just want to say that. Because it makes this job as in a leadership position, it makes this job much easier.
If it's not you, tell your friends.
Yeah. That would be nice.
Now it's Travis's turn.
A couple of things before we get to the agenda item. We had a great turnout for the election. We had seventy-four point one percent turnout. So congratulations, everyone, I got reelected. Then, thank you to Monica for helping run a smooth election again. But we had our Badger Book software out again too, for the first time, and it went really smooth. Lots of, no headaches, no errors by our poll workers. It was very well liked and received by residents as well. So, and thank you to DPW for fixing up some ADA requirements by WEC as well that were coming down from us. And then thank you to the chief for having a patrol officer out during the day for us to be safe at our poll station. So great turnout and happy it was a smooth election. But fortunately, there'll be a recount for cert court branch seven that was notified today. So more information will be coming out for that. ADT installed a new security system in the village since ours is broken. So we're excited that we have one back up now and running. We finally received our grant of twenty-six thousand dollars from the state to the bank. And then we received our grant money today from S D Johnson Foundation for the welcome signs. And they gave us a nice letter if anybody would like to read it up here. The PSC is now working on reviewing our water rate increase. So we've been working with others a lot. On that, more, more information should be coming if needed by staff to get sure that gets in the finish line. The Department of Treasury report has been submitted for the allocation of our ARPA funds. So that has all been submitted and we won't lose any money from that, which is great. So that's been done. Village Board vacancy, like we have said, has been published. Outdoor recreation dates, if you'd like to know, April twenty-first will be the first day the live link will go open and put in your mailboxes by the post office and will close April twenty-eighth late in the evening. And you've heard the engagement session is at Windspread on the fifteenth at six. Thank you to Windspread for allowing to waive the fee and for hosting us. And then we're working on finalizing the budget calendar for twenty-twenty-six's budget. It's a big year for us, getting CIP numbers to present to the finance committee in May, kind of reversing things from waiting to the last minute. Making sure that the finance committee has all the appropriate information for the CIP and looking everything over from quotes and budget wise to make sure they have the best options to make their decisions. So that's coming down the pipeline. So watch out for that. And working on strategic plan consultants to getting us quotes for that and the budget as well. So hopefully we'll get some numbers soon for that. Plan Commission's next meeting is April sixteenth at five thirty. Board of Appeals is meeting on April twenty-ninth at five thirty as well. Next, if I could have the review and possibly take action on our proclamation if I was a president of caucus and I could stand up with our one trustee that will be leaving us. We have a proclamation honoring trustee Waterfall and her commitment to the board.
This will be Waterfall Day. Waterfall evening. Wherever.
Okay, do you want to read?
You can read it.
Okay. Okay, Village Windpoint Proclamation honoring trustee Waterfall. Whereas trustee Waterfall has been a dedicated and invaluable member of the Village of Windpoint for many years, selflessly contributing her time, expertise, and heart to the betterment of our community. And whereas through her tireless service as a trustee, as well as her impactful role on the Plan Commission and many other committees, trustee Waterfall has consistently demonstrated a deep commitment to preserving the character, growth, and future of the Village of Windpoint, always working diligently to ensure that the needs and aspirations of our residents are met. And whereas trustee Waterfall's unwavering passion for our community has been evident in her countless volunteer hours, efforts for the lighthouse, and numerous contributions to local projects, creating lasting positive change that will resonate for generations to come. And whereas trustee Waterfall has exemplified the highest standards of integrity, professionalism, and leadership throughout her tenure, earning the admiration and respect of her colleagues, fellow residents, and all who have had the privilege to work alongside her. And whereas trustee Waterfall's legacy of service has had an immeasurable impact on the Village of Windpoint, leaving a lasting impression on all who have benefited from her dedication and care. And now, therefore, the Village Board, staff, and residents of Windpoint do hereby proclaim April tenth, twenty-twenty-five as a celebration of trustee Waterfall's remarkable years of service. We extend our deepest gratitude for her tireless efforts, unwavering dedication, and lasting contributions to our community.
And so we've, we've gotten a gift, a fleece that you will be able to take home with, it was just a little ago. And a nice little plaque that you will be able to take home as well. So again, thank you for working on staff and being a great impact on us. Again, we appreciate your, your service.
You come on anytime.
You're always welcome to come to meetings and check in with staff.
You have three minutes.
There'll be, oh, there'll be cake afterwards as well. I forgot about that. We did get a cake. So if you would like some cake, everyone's welcome to stay. So. That is it. Oh, whoa, sorry. We didn't motion and accept the proclamation.
I will make a motion that you accept the proclamation.
All in favor?
That's same, motion passes.
All right, I will make a motion that we receive and file the following items. Item one, village utility reports, financial reports, March twenty-twenty-five. Item two, court reports, March twenty-twenty-five. Item three, police reports, March twenty-twenty-five. Item four, fire and EMS reports, March twenty-twenty-five. Item five, building permit report, March twenty-twenty-five. And item six, Baxter Woodman report, March twenty-twenty-five.
You have everything that you need.
Got a motion to adjourn? Our trustee.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned, six fifty-nine.
Thank you.